Meeting. We are opening our meeting tonight with a school choice public hearing. So, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, every year the Department of Education requires all school systems in Massachusetts to open a public hearing on school choice. And it gives people an opportunity if they would like to urge school committees to accept children from other districts as a fee. The school system that accepts children, you get $5,000 a child, which is much less than what it costs to educate a child in the district, but that's the fee that you get. If the child is also a special education student, there is some additional funding that would go along with that student. Halifax right now ranges, it seems like about 603 to 609 are the numbers. I don't know what they are today, but they're somewhere in that ballpark. We have great class sizes here. I don't feel we have any low numbers in a particular grade. I believe the anticipated numbers coming in for kindergarten are in the same range.
They have that for the last two years.
So, I personally would not recommend opening the school for school choice at this time.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
I do. Just remembering, do you or we would allow so many students to apply and then we approve them?
No.
Or there's people that want to act as a company?
Nope, neither, I'm sorry, neither one. But good choice is both. But they're just not correct. So, you would open up grades. So, you would normally open up in kindergarten, that would be the normal. But if you had, for instance, a very small class in grade three, you might offer five seats in grade three to sort of build up the capacity there. And then people would apply, but you can't turn them down. And you don't get to review their application. So, if they apply, they're basically in until you fill the spots.
But then remember, once they're in, they can stay in through sixth grade.
Right, just for this building. And then Silver Lake is a different school system.
So, they have to reapply at that time?
No, we don't accept them in Silver Lake unless they change.
Unless they open to school.
Choice.
Choice.
Because that's a separate district.
Does Plimpton do it?
So, Plimpton is our only school system that has school choice students. They currently have eight students. Five of them are in grade three, one grade two, one grade one, one kindergarten. So, they're a small school, and their grade three is particularly small. And that's why they opened it up. So...
Yeah, I remember when they go, uh, try to get my sister out to do it.
Yeah.
She already paid for her water, couldn't get it back.
Oh, okay.
She was like, "No, we're going," I think.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, if nobody has any more questions about it, we just have to take a vote as a committee that says that we are not allowing school choice at this time.
I move to decline participation in school choice.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that...
Yep.
So, now we will commence our regular meeting beginning at 6:08. Thank you, Area 58, for filming tonight. Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled at this time? Just be, just watching? There are minutes circulating from our short meeting on March 21st.
Yes.
I thought you said something in the meeting, I missed it.
And these were the minutes that Linda was kind enough to take. It was an eight-minute meeting or something like that.
Yeah. They look fine to me.
Yeah.
She'll be here at 6:15.
Okay.
Is it okay to let these members be public?
Yes, yes.
A bunch of members.
Yep, yep, thank you.
So, I need a motion to accept the minutes from our March 21st meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Warrants are circulating. School committee correspondence and reports. So, Bob was kind enough to make copies of this letter that we received from, we don't even know, school committees and boards of the American towns and cities listed below, which there are none listed. So, everybody, yeah, everybody has a copy of this. It's briefly just a movement of school committees, I guess, that are trying to send a letter to President Trump regarding gun regulations. So, I don't know if you guys want to take some more time to look it over, or you want to make a vote either way on whether or not we are going to participate in this action.
I would quickly add one thing. The Hingham School Committee has already addressed this, and they declined it. And they attempted to email the chair of the Dover School Committee multiple times and received no answer. I think what may have happened, and they believe that it was not truly authored, that it may have been done by him individually without the consent of the committee at large, and so they declined it.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, the authenticity of it is in question. So, yeah.
It's written quite poorly.
I mean, my first response was not even to give it much thought, but seeing as it was sent to me directly to address our committee, I thought it was, you know, only right to bring it forward, so... Do you want to make a motion, Bob, on how we should handle this?
I move that we decline to participate in this petition.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Did you guys see it? Do you want to take, you have a copy of it. Weird, right? Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Wonderful grammar.
Yeah. Not too much.
I don't have any other further correspondence. I checked the mail, there's nothing in the box, so...
Oh.
Unfinished business? I don't have any. Anybody else? Can you think of any, Joy?
No.
All set. Thank you. New business? Nope. There, under future agenda items, I know Linda wanted to bring something up, so I'm going to just take that out for a minute and revisit it when she shows up in about 10 minutes, if that's okay with everybody. Okay?
That was a future agenda item?
Yes. She just wanted to discuss something briefly, but to put it on hold for our next meeting. And so now our report of standing committees. So, policy, we met, we should have gone over it in our March meeting, but seeing as it was abbreviated, meeting just for the budget, we kind of pushed it to tonight. If anybody wants to take a stab at these, doing the alphabet over here, but...
So, someone could actually waive the actual reading and then accept as a second reading?
Okay, so make a motion to waive?
Right, yep.
Okay, so I raise a motion that we waive the...
Actual reading.
Actual reading.
And accept it.
And accept the second reading?
Yes.
For policies.
Yep.
ACE, EB, EEA, GVG, EGBGF, IK, JII, JJH-R, JLCC, JLCD, JQ, KBBA, KCD, KE, KHB, LDA. Check it out.
No, wait, no, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And you all have a copy of these policies that you received prior?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there were some policies that were deleted...
Yes.
From our manual based on the MASC recommendations. And so, we as a committee decided that we were going to go ahead and delete those. So, now we need a motion to actually delete those, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to actually delete the policies from the manual based on the MASC recommendations of DJG, IHAE, IJJ, IJM, JBA, JICG, and JRA-R.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
One second.
Yeah.
Well, Simon, what's this really cool? Ian, can you think of anything between March of '17 and March of '18 that's changed aside from our operational weight from last year? Is that a significant change?
Is this a trick question?
So, where I'm going with this is the gas usage. So, last year, March of 2017, the average temperature outside was 32.5 degrees. This March was the average 33.4 degrees, so 0.9 degree difference. We say it goes 18 percent gas usage over last year.
Is that because of our new boiler? Or no, that's oil?
No, no, it's probably because of the insulation in the roof.
Oh!
That's the point he's getting at.
Oh!
Yeah, it is cool.
It was 18 percent? Yeah, and so it was an average of, for the entire month last year, we used 7,460 thrs of gas, and last month we used 6,317. It's like 18 percent. And it was relatively...
Relatively the same. Yeah. That's pretty exciting.
We'll have to put the infrared imaging on there.
No, that's, I'm glad you interrupted for that. That's pretty sweet. I mean, considering all the money and time that we...
Yeah.
See? You didn't even know it, he made you a hero.
What did I do wrong now?
That's so funny. Okay, negotiations, we're done.
We're done?
Yes, we are.
For now.
Yes.
PAC, Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
We met briefly last month just to discuss, again, the executive director position. Now we're going to tell the two candidates, and this Thursday they're both going to be interviewing for the position.
That's exciting.
Yeah, so, at that meeting, we're supposedly going to vote for the next executive director.
Awesome. So, it's Thursday?
That's Thursday, yes.
Cool. So, we'll know by our next meeting?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Youth and Rec is Linda, so we'll skip that and see if she has anything to say when she pops in. PTO is...
PTO, I went to one, which would have been February, I guess.
How was that?
It was pre-Booster Fund, so that was the topic. They're desperately in need of volunteers, of course, but specifically they need a new president and new treasurer, so they're putting up a plea for help. And then they rescheduled last month's meeting to last week at night, like the last one. So, I think it was kind of trying to make it...
Okay, we can ask her when she gets settled in.
I heard that the new fund was a very successful...
Wait, did you dye your hair green to get slimed?
We did. We didn't get slimed.
But you dyed your hair green. Yeah, do you have pictures of that?
We did, green, we did.
Is there a picture?
Is there evidence of this?
There is.
It's better than...
It hasn't been poked yet.
Minus the grace.
Right. He's just making $300 off of the slime.
You guys were like, "Yes!" All right, well, I want to see a picture at our next meeting, so you better bring that, because everybody wants to see the green hair. Unless you can pull it up on them.
And that's myself, and it's Brian and Mr. Gerke with a green beard.
Ooh, he's grown a beard.
He does have a full, he has a full-out beard.
Okay.
And it was green.
Awesome. Capital budget?
I can talk a little bit about some things.
Okay. And admin review?
I believe that they are gathering the evaluations, and I'm not sure, but I think sometime this week they're going to meet and do a summary, and then I'll review them, and then we'll have a union meeting to present the outcome.
Okay, great.
But I don't know dates.
And Union 31?
Will be presenting my evaluation.
Right, okay. Linda, did you happen to attend the night PTO meeting?
No, I was unable to go.
Okay, that's fine. Once you get settled in, I put a pause on the future agenda item that you want to address, so do you, are you prepared to bring it up now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Just that, I was looking at the survey that Department of Education puts out, and they have a question and answer thing on the website, but they don't have an example of, they have an old example up on their website. So, I was wondering if, do you, have you heard anything about the new one yet? Do you have a copy of the new?
I don't.
Not yet, so it's...
No.
Okay. I'd love to be able to discuss what's, because they changed the name of it, but it's similar, but I just wanted to find out more about it.
Yeah, apologize, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll try to look into it.
Yeah.
Do you know what survey she's talking about, right?
Yep.
The one that's tagged on?
Goes with MCAS?
Yes.
Yeah, it's called something different now.
Vocal.
Vision or...
Vocal, I think. Vista?
What is it?
Is it Vista? Is it the Vista survey?
I thought it was vocal.
V-I-S-T-A? No, I think Vista was a different one. It's the one that, it used to be...
Should be in my email, you sent it to me.
Yeah.
We'll look into it and try to bring it, bring it to you next month.
Yeah, the one that goes with the fifth, the eighth, the tenth.
And then the eighth and tenth.
And for the, for the fifth grade is with the Science MCAS, so it's not until the third week in May or whatever that is.
Okay.
So, we do have time before the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, it's about school climate and things like that.
I don't even know what it is.
Okay.
It's a survey that the fifth graders take.
Yes.
Okay, it's a student survey.
Student survey.
And it was called something else last time.
Yeah, and we voted not to participate last time, yeah.
Right.
It was a social...
Yeah, it's like social emotional survey.
It is.
About like the school climate and things like that, yeah.
Right, yep.
Okay.
And it's totally voluntary, but yeah, if we could get some more information on it and talk about it in May, that'd be awesome.
Yes.
Before we leave the future agenda items, do we want to put on for next month the possible meeting schedule, proposed changes?
You know, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Are we going to the six to seven week cycle?
Well, I have a plan for six or seven, but, you know, we can look at it.
I keep, as soon as I get through budgets.
Almost there, Joy, we're almost there.
There's a provision for extra meetings, you know.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for remembering that. So, oh, we're like speeding up.
We're doing well.
We're doing very well. So, we're going to kind of take the last bit of the agenda out of order, just in case we get tied up, because Joy and I are going to leave to go to Finance Committee at seven. So, I'm going to ask that Joy do her presentation first, and then we'll kind of go in order after that, if that's okay with everybody. Okay?
Great. So, you have in your packet a draft of the next year's school calendar, and it is very, very much a draft, just so you know. I just wanted to give you a chance to look at it. We have not really had an opportunity to meet as an administrative team to go through all of the details with it. Next year, the first day of school for the students would be August 29th, which is the Wednesday before Labor Day. We always begin the Wednesday before Labor Day, which has worked out especially helpfully this year with all the snow days, which I'd rather not talk about. And then we have a half-day in September. Last year, we had it on a Friday, and everybody felt it was a little too early, so we've moved it towards the end of the month for a Monday, and we're hoping that that will be, give us more of an opportunity to do some professional development. We do not have any voting this year, so we do not need to hold our Professional Development Day on the voting day in November. So, we're going to hold it on the Tuesday of the Columbus Day weekend, which is our traditional full day off. So, parents have a four-day weekend, which they always seem to like. We also have an in-service day on October, yeah, October 18th is a half-day. November, Veterans Day will be celebrated on Monday, the 12th. It is actually observed on the 11th, but we always have it the day after. Half-day before Thanksgiving, which would be the 21st. Christmas falls on a Tuesday next year, so we will have our last day of school on the 21st.
God, help the teachers.
I know it. And then we will be coming back on January 2nd. So, it'll be a full seven days off this year, which is actually really nice.
No, it's actually more than that.
Yeah, it's actually a little bit more. So, I think it'll work out well, so it's actually kind of nice for us. Martin Luther King Day is on Monday, the 21st. Remember, we used to always hold our PD day on the 22nd, and our secondary teachers asked us if we could move that, because it's right in the middle of midterms, and it really messed up their schedule, so we moved it around the February vacation. Last year was the first time we did that. I don't know if you remember that or not. It seemed like the concept worked well. What didn't work as well was holding it on a Friday. We found the Friday was a difficult day, and so what we'd like to try to do this year, but is open for discussion, is to move it to the Monday after, as opposed to the Friday. So, if, again, this is just the first draft, so you can think a little bit about that. But we like to try to make it so it gives parents a little bit of extra time. Seems to work pretty well.
Other teaching matters?
Yes.
That's what doesn't work.
Well, there's that, there is that.
They don't work at this either.
I know, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, we have two early releases in March. March is a long month, most teachers always say that. So, the seventh is an early release day, and then the 21st is K6 parent conferences. Spring vacation will be the 15th to the 19th, and then we have Memorial Day, and then our final early release, where they sort of go through student placements on the elementary level. And the high school graduation's the first, and the last day of school's the 13th, and we're not having any snow days at all next year. I put in my request, I'm sure it will be honored, there won't be a problem, so we're all set. So, this again is just the first round of the draft. You can look at it, see if you see any errors or concerns. Again, we obviously need to have who's going to be on the committees, you know, we have elections and those kinds of things, but this at least gives you a first opportunity to review it. Update on building projects. We actually have a meeting scheduled next week, I think it's Thursday, if I remember correctly. Charlie sent out an email, I think it's the 12th. We are in the process of going out to bid for the siding, windows, doors, and also the fire suppression system. There is some concern about whether or not the fire suppression system will be able to be completed in one summer. So, we're going to wait to see how the bids come back and what the information is, and Kane, feel free to jump in at any time. And we've had some people coming through, I believe, and have looked at the building. It is going to be an exceptionally busy summer. I have to say, we are concerned about our ability to get everything done and to open on time. It really will be very tight. So, I'm sort of keeping everything crossed that we can cross. I noticed Kane's got his arms crossed, good job, Kane. So, we are worried, but again, they did manage the roof. So, you know, we're just hopeful that we get a good company's in again and we get the work done. So, but there is a meeting next Thursday, I think at nine, if I remember right.
Yeah, because I don't have it, I don't know if I got the email from Charlie.
Charlie sent a note out, I think it's the 12th at nine, right? I think that's what, that's what my memory is, anyway. Yeah, it's the 12th at nine.
Somehow I seem to be left off of some of those emails.
Your name was on it.
Oh, really? Maybe I just skipped over. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's okay. So, that's the update on the building projects. Budget discussion, there is a finance committee meeting at 7 o'clock. Summer and I, and I guess Alex, will be going to that. I believe that they will be voting our budget at that meeting, or I hope they will be voting our budget at that meeting. My impression is that the finance committee is pleased with the cuts that we made at the last meeting, so I am optimistic that they will vote it, but I won't know until we get the final sort of blessing on the budget. So, we're hopeful on that. And we already did the school choice vote. That's all I had.
Yeah, we did. So, I guess I only have one thing to say about the building project, is if it's going to spill over and be a little bit late, obviously this isn't a discussion we need to have right now, do you think in the future we need to have a conversation about moving this around a little bit?
I, I don't know. That's a good question. You know, there's, there's a couple of different ways that I think we may need to handle it. It may be that some areas of the building would be closed off.
Mm-hmm.
Is one option.
Like the, right, we did the gym.
Right. We did, right, exactly. So, I think there could be, you know, possibly the gym, possibly the large group room, you know, we could maybe begin those projects before school's over and have gym held outside.
Okay, yeah.
I think, you know, I think it's going to be interesting. You know, the problem is, this year, we're getting out June 22nd, I believe. If we move Halifax too much, school legally has to end by...
The 30th.
The 30th of June. So, there's not a whole lot of wiggle.
Right, well, my thought was taking a vacation away.
We could do that. It would be the other option, if we had to.
You want to have picketers out front?
Yeah.
We do it all, see...
I'll be right behind you, Summer.
Be calling, you know, as soon as...
I know, I know.
You're tall, like they mean.
But whatever, that's, I guess we have to wait and see what the, after the meeting on Thursday, what a better idea.
I'm hoping the meeting on Thursday will give us some better information, but it, but it really is, I mean, the town has been wonderful, you know, we're really working with some very good people. I'm optimistic, we did pull the roof off, it's great. We had about 18 percent decrease in our gas bill in one month, so...
I'm so glad you noticed that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, yeah, the, it's been astounding, I think, in terms of the impact the roof has had, so we can only be optimistic that'll be even better with new windows.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And doors.
And doors, yep.
Right. Okay. Well, Kane, I'm going to bump you to the very end, if that's okay.
Okay. Gives you a beginning and an end.
Ms. Healy, would you like to jump in and go?
I would jump in. I was going to mention, Alex, I was talking about the utilities. One of the areas, one of the areas I wanted to bring to your attention, last month still we had a struggle with, because the gas usage for heating was so extreme, those early days in January where it was really cold. And we have a committed contract, the problem is if you exceed that contract, we do have been allotted to exceed it by 20%, but we exceeded it by like 40%. So, we had to pay the market rate, and the rates went up high, but we have had some savings in usage. And I did want to mention that we have had some savings in electricity, but that's being offset by, we're responsible for paying for the project, so we're paying 14, almost $1,500 a month, and that goes through 2020. So, we're not going to see the true impact. $17,000 the other we're paying towards that, so imagine that, our electric bill's going to be that much lower if we weren't taking care of that.
Wow.
So, I just did want to bring that to your attention, and then a couple of other things I want to bring to your attention. On page three of the detail on the special education, the contract services line has gone up, the number that you're seeing there, $10,000, it's actually going up to $31,000. We have, we've been reviewing our bills for occupational, physical therapy, and it's just coming in higher than we expected, so that line will grow. The good news is that next line down, the transportation line, will be decreasing by $40,000. We had a factor in there for, we had some students that we had to rate some temporary transportation and we put it in the worst case scenario as an encumbers and it didn't end up being as bad as we thought it would be. And then under special education tuition, we're right now showing a surplus on our financial and we're expecting, well, about $16,000 at the end of the year.
Total surplus or in that line?
A $16,000 surplus in that line.
Oh, okay.
Special education tuition line. Yeah, right now, we are looking at the whole budget to see where, where we will be for the end of the year. So, we're kind of waiting to get the budget a little bit behind us to dive into that. So, that's coming next.
Okay.
And then on the last page, our district vocational transportation tuition, we still have a slight surplus there. It's a $3,800. And we're able to accommodate, we had a student that moved in during the year and we're paying less to his transportation, so we're going to take care of that within this current year budget. And that's it, unless I have questions. Enjoy your financial.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Bro.
So, you have a curriculum instruction assessment update. I'll just pull out a few key items because I know you are pressed for time. Just, I know the emphasis on safety and wellness in our schools today. I just wanted to note that over 130 staff members were trained by the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition and the QPR Question Persuade and Refer Technique. And I've listed the interventions there and the model to provide you with additional information about, about that. Lana Cheresko and I have been researching an on-campus sheltered English immersion endorsement course for teachers to help make it a little more convenient. So, the courses can be quite costly and in addition, very few places are, are able to have an onsite course. So, while the cost may not be all that much different, at least it will be local and it will help, help our teachers have a more convenient way of earning that endorsement. So, Lana has sent out a, what's that? It will, if, if we are unable to fill all the spots, it will be open up to other educators. So, Lana has sent out a survey to staff to try to figure out, you know, when is the best time for most people to take the course because we want it to be successful and want to make sure that we fill the course as well. So, more information to come, but because of the amount of time it takes to be approved by the state, it's most likely won't be until the fall of 2018. What we're going to try to do is submit a proposal for fall and spring and, and hopefully be able to provide both, but at the very least, to get one of them in next year. The Wellness Committee reviewed the epinephrine procedure and that was proposed by the school nurses and there you'll see some information regarding the proposal for nurses to send out notification to parents to have the option to supply individual epinephrine for their child. And stock epinephrine would be used in the event of a child not bringing EpiPens or epinephrine to school. However, students would still need to bring their EpiPen epinephrine with them on field trips. So, that would be going out in the late summer, early fall to parents and that information has also been shared with the superintendent for consideration. The state held an information session pertaining to the next generation accountability session and I'm not going to go over all the details, but I have provided you in your packet with two slides from that presentation. I want to point out two new indicators for non-high schools, for elementary schools in particular, there's going to be a new English language proficiency target. So, students will be expected to meet that target and if they don't, that will have an impact on our accountability rating. And the other new addition is chronic absenteeism, the percentage of students missing 10% or more of their days in membership. So, that could have a negative impact on your accountability rating if you have students who are, have chronic absentee problems.
Can I ask a question about that? How, how do, how does the Department of Education, are they making suggestions at ways that the school can like combat that? Because I don't really feel like it's the school's responsibility if the child's absent.
Not in this particular session, however, for a couple, two, three years now, principals have been sending out notifications when students are absent for more than, it's five days that you send out a notice.
We have a series, ours is seven.
Seven.
And then we make phone calls at 12 and then we have meetings. It's in our handbook. It really is kind of spelled out, but again, we send letters out.
And again, the most the principal can do is really, you know, keep notifying the parents and asking them to
Right, and encourage them to.
Right. Now, some absenteeism can't be helped because of medical issues.
Of course.
Other absentee issues might have to do with
The environment, the child and things like that, yeah.
Right. And so, those are handled differently by different state institutions that, that we may need to call upon if we're having a difficult time getting a child in school who should be educated.
But you're saying that it, the school is going to be held accountable
Yes.
For that? So, they always have been, this is a slightly different.
They're just weaving it into the accountability system now. So, they're going to
So, even if, even if the proper procedure is followed, like, like the phone calls have been made, the meetings have been had, the notes are in place, if it's a medical thing, the school's still ultimately accountable and it's like a nick against the school if that's the case where you have a chronically absent child.
Yes, and my understanding is that they're looking for schools to develop ways to encourage students to re-enter school. We have more students than ever before with anxiety, health-related issues that could be attending school and we need to find ways to transition them back to school.
Okay.
Those kinds of issues, I think, is their, their real, their real push because it, like I said, there are other institutions that can oversee why a child may not be going to school and intervene if necessary. But this is really kind of a push on schools to try to consider ways to, to, to help reintegrate the child with social, emotional, learning needs and bring them back into school and to work with our resources to find a way to make that happen. Now, could there be unintended consequences of this kind of accountability? Absolutely. How, what kind of an impact it will have remains to be seen. And again, this was just a general information session. There wasn't a lot of detail. There was a lot of detail about the possible impact of how increasing the importance of growth in the statistical analysis. It got very heavy in the statistical analysis portion and not, not a lot of the kind of, the practical, how we're going to implement this kind of thing. We anticipate that there'll be more direction from the state once it's been reviewed by the Board of Education and that's scheduled for late in the spring. So, stay tuned, but it should, these changes should be on your radar because they've, they've made us aware that these are potential changes coming our way. And this is all under the Every Student Succeeds Act. So, this is the, this is the plan that they had to create in order to satisfy every student succeeds.
Okay, which is a federal initiative.
Yes.
So, it's, okay.
Even though they said they want to stay some how they say, but not really.
I'm with you, girl.
One of the questions to the student growth present, so that's not proficiency, that's growth.
Right. So, as of right now, they're recommending that the ratio remains the same, that we still include both achievement and growth, but we're not going to, again, under Every Student Succeeds, there was a real push to kind of inflate the weight of growth in this calculation.
What does that mean?
So, right now, we have a three to one ratio where we count achievement, let's say, three times as much as we count growth.
What is growth?
Growth is the measure of how much a student grows or learns in comparison to students who scored similarly on the test the year before in that subject area. So, I can, so if I'm in third, if I'm in, let's say I'm in fourth grade, not ELA, I don't want to pick third grade. I'm in fourth grade and I took ELA, my growth score is compared to other students who scored like me in third grade. They didn't even have to go to the same school, but if, and I, I'm compared to all the school, the children who scored the same way I did in grade three.
Okay.
And so, if I grew more, I have a high growth than students who scored similarly.
So, how is that different than achievement?
So, achievement is just the actual score that you receive. It doesn't give you any indication of where you were, where you're going. It's just a flat raw score.
At that point in time, compared to other people, your same age group that have taken success. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Because somebody could not tell and somebody else
That's no growth, but they could still have decent achievement, right? Right?
But even if you scored the same score two years in a row, you could still have growth because that would mean that the kids who scored the same as you the year before
Didn't do as well.
Maybe didn't do as well.
Okay.
So, you could have the exact same score and have 50% growth, even though it seems like you wouldn't because you got the same score twice, but
Because it's a constant scale.
It's based on the kids who scored that same as you the year before.
Okay.
So, like say it was out of 100 and you got a 75 in third grade, you got a 75 in fourth grade, you would think, oh, I didn't grow at all, but you may have grown, you know, like 50, 60, 70% because the other kids who scored a 75 in third grade got a 65.
50, okay. I see.
And so, weighting growth isn't more, isn't such a bad thing per se, but right now, we don't have a growth percentile for science. So, that kind of calculation would make science completely insignificant and kind of take them out of that important role that they're currently playing in our accountability system.
Hmm.
So, that's just one of the reasons why they don't want to put too much emphasis on growth because right now, not all of our tests have a growth score.
Right. And the reason science doesn't have a growth score, science is only a 5, 8 and we do it at night, so it's not every year. So, you can't have a growth score.
And third graders won't have growth scores because they would have taken
Right.
So, that's, and you also have, which is less pertinent to our discussion here, but you also have, I've also given you the high school accountability changes. Again, they will also have an English language proficiency target. They have, in addition to chronic absenteeism, they're also going to be getting points for the percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework. So, for the high school to be able to offer things like advanced placement courses, dual enrollment courses, and the number of students who are enrolled in them, high schools will, will receive
Like bonus points kind of?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that's good. I mean, that, that's great because that encourages schools to sort of push their students more academically, yeah.
It could be negative two if they're
It could push too hard.
Taking too much on and the kids are all freaking out.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's, again, it's about striking that balance.
Yes, balance is key.
The intention is good to encourage more kids to push themselves and to try for that academic rigor and for schools to consider things such as dual enrollment in college courses, which open up more opportunities for students. On the other side, we have to be careful to make sure that our students are, are being careful to balance, you know, how many of these types of courses they take with, on top of some of the other things that they belong to or participate in.
Right, right. I mean, they're kids too, right? So, they have sports and they have lives and, yeah.
So, again, these are just some things coming up just to be aware of, but again, it, it benefits us all to, you know, to, to again, use our common sense and to balance these things and to provide a well-rounded and rich and socially, emotionally supportive environment for our students, not just
Right.
Resting at points for an accountability system. You know, we want to make sure that we meet the standards, but we're, we're also mindful that we want to continue to maintain what's important to our communities.
Absolutely. Right, so as you, as we were just talking about the AP courses and dual enrollment, but two minutes ago, you were talking about how we have high anxiety children, chronic absenteeism. So, you're right, it's striking that balance.
We have to be careful not to get too anxious written over this.
Yeah, right, right.
But it's important to know that this is coming so that no one feels like I had no idea.
So, when is, when is the, this, when is this coming? When is the accountability piece of this coming down?
Assuming that all things go well in the late spring, this would be in place for this upcoming year.
Fall.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So.
So, you have a lot to do.
Well, I could be reporting on new, new indicators in the fall that we've never seen before, so. We don't have any comparative data, so once again, it will be our first time and we'll try to keep that in mind as well, but this is just one data point. It's not, it's just something to begin our, our quest.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's all I'm going to share from this unless you have additional questions because I know you have your budget.
Actually, the, the chair of the finance committee just made us aware that he's running late and the meeting will start till 7:15. So, we're doing fantastic.
I should have let you sweat it out.
Well, I mean, all we have left is Kane, so.
All we got left.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. So, before we move to your presentation, Kane, I'm sure there's other things that you need to talk about before your presentation, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we have a member of the audience that has requested that she be on the agenda to speak regarding the safety presentation, correct?
I'd rather watch Kane's presentation first and then ask my questions.
Can you, can you?
She wants to watch Kane's first.
That's okay.
I'd rather watch Kane's presentation first and then ask my question.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that you were here and that you wanted to participate in the presentation piece of it.
I did. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I just wanted a question about the incident that caught my hat on fire about the safety of schools. Do you know if the girl, will be a adult or a child, might have
No, there you go.
Okay, so, do you want to start your calendar of events and enrollment chat?
So, we are standing at 600, three seats. We don't have a, yet, we're sending out information in regards to kindergarten orientation, so we're still, we don't have a solid number yet of participating to be kind of where it's been the last couple of years, we're just been mid 80s to high 80s. So, we have a kindergarten meeting next Tuesday, so we'd like to get a better idea.
BoostaDum was a true success, we talked about earlier. We raised nearly $30,000. Students in grade 8, 6, running over, they're very much into it. BoostaDum company representatives, they were fantastic with the kids. So, I believe at the last PTO meeting, we are re-upping for next year, similar timeframe in March. And I think we're going to get in touch with the playground company to try to at least take some of the profit and put it towards the playground instead of waiting three or four years. Some of these fourth, fifth and sixth graders, at least a benefit in the next couple of years, so we can get some sort of plan going with the playground company. We can raise 30 grand, you know, what can we do, 100 grand.
Can I jump in real quick? You're talking about the playground down by the tennis courts, right? Or the one, the kindergarten one right behind, where the flat top is?
That's ours.
This one? Okay, okay. Not, it's totally separate from Hops?
Yes.
Okay.
A good success. Kids loved it. And it was a very good one. We had a lot of fun, it was something besides
It's great because it actually, we had two or three snow days inside all the way there. It really was tough for us to kind of stay on track and keep it, everyone kind of involved with it, so it worked out really well. Report cards and conferences, of course, motivation interfered with that as well. So, the report cards did go out electronically, they just went out, instead of going out on that Monday, they went out on that Wednesday. And then what we had done with conferences is that we sent out a survey giving parents the option of whether or not you could reschedule, have a home conference or you didn't need one at this time. So, we had a lot of people respond, which was great. Sometimes you get those surveys and you can have any responses, but we had a very large turnout in terms of responding to it. So, they indicated with the teachers what they would like to do, whether it be a home call or reschedule a conference. So, teachers are doing that as, as we speak. So, it was different. Some, some decided to just set it up on a day, some kind of set it up each morning or afternoon, but as always, teachers are available throughout the year. So, if you have any concerns or questions, just reach out to the number and make a sense of them.
I have a cast window again today. Our district will start testing tomorrow, grade five, April 3rd, April 4th, and we move on to grade six, April 9th, April 10th, moving on to grade four, April 11th, 12th, these are all darkness. And then I'll have vacation and then follow up with grade three, April 25th and 26th with ELA, take a short break and jump into math. So, we're ready to go. Report cards ready, this is another infrastructure trials. So, it looks like schools will be shaped by activity, system, so, tech job, excellent ones, job preparing, so, ready to go tomorrow.
Breakfast will be served on the other days. So, PTO's helping us out with that. We sent out a parent placement survey electronically again.
Did you see that?
Something you have to do every year.
Did you see that?
And the survey is just an opportunity for parents to kind of fill out information in regards to their child placement for next year. So, we give like a two-week window for parents to fill that out, just to, we asked it, and it says it on there, please don't request any specific teacher, but provide us with a description of the work environment your child wants best in, anything they need to know so the placement team can make a decision. It's probably a very useful tool to share with teachers. Yeah, it seems so.
How's that work? Do you print that out and give it to the
It just prints out a master list.
Can you print like just third grade all at once and just fourth grade?
We can, we can sort it.
That's cool.
The way it works with
Gotcha. And then just hand that stuff to
To the services.
Parents for teachers.
Make sure you review everything because some parents do write a lot of
Yeah, yeah. I try to do really, what's
And it's, it's good to have in there, plus, I mean, we encourage parents to kind of remember not only the current year that they're in, but also kind of revert back to, oh, maybe their child was in first grade, that there was maybe not a pleasant experience, that you can bring that to a forefront, because we do remember that in that grade, so.
Do the, and then the teachers look at it too? You know, because some parents, they need a very strict teacher and the teachers be like
How does that work?
So, what happens for placement, we ask the teachers to kind of fill out just kind of an informational card on each sheet and it includes kind of a whole slew of information regarding achievement, social, behavioral situations that we have in building, any particular needs that they have. So, we come to the table with that and if we have information that parents either email us directly or they filled out a survey and then we sit down for the teams, that includes myself, the special ed team, the classroom teachers.
So, they'll throw it out.
So, it is, it's a pretty major process.
Yeah.
Cards all over the table and people kind of making sure that students are placed with the needs that they have and it requires
It's cool. That's great.
It's several steps in the process because then once we think we have it and we share it up and then the special
We have 40 people in this class.
So, it is
40 attendants.
It's, it's good for us because our goal is to have it done by the last day of school. It's so bad for them to do it over this time. It's done on the last day, so. So, I think the teachers do a good job.
Because I forget if they find out
On the last, on the report card last day. We found that to be just so much more helpful in terms of us in the office that we have to like hand them all the letters and mail them out and then we have to scramble if we do need to make a change last minute. This way, it goes out on a report card last day, it's very
Less stressed with the kids too.
Oh, and the kids are so pumped about it, yeah.
They are.
Could you hear?
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, that's nice.
It seemed to be working out pretty well for the last couple of days, you know, before we get into the safety presentation, just some upcoming dates we have on April 4th, we have HHS Title 1 reading night about 8 p.m. On the 6th, we have the, we have almost 20, almost 20 years for the grade 17, grade 6 On the sixth, we have a, here as well, almost twenty, almost twenty years for the grade seventeen, grade six best. And we next Tuesday, the tenth, we have kindergarten orientation at six p.m. On the thirtieth, the Friday's, the surveys are going to be back, and then we need to vacation. PTO beginning on the twenty-fifth, at nine ten, seven p.m. And then on Friday, the twenty-seventh, we have. And I didn't even mention on here that we did have a very special guest, I don't know if you're familiar with him, Laura Duckstep.
The author?
The author, who actually went here. So she contacted us, we had no, never had her in here. But she contacted us and came back and shared her stories, her story herself when she was here. Very powerful speaker, she did like a K-one group, two, three, four groups, and then five, six. So she really had a positive message that she shared her books with us, it was great.
And it's just like really cool, like Tivon thought it was just really cool, like, and he kept being like, and she went to Halifax. And I'm like, I, I got it, like.
It was really, it was very experienced. Mr. Manito was the prince, he might have been the principal, it might have been teaching fifty-sixth grade at the time, was something that day that she was here presenting.
Oh, my goodness.
It was kind of neat for him to come down, like, oh, my goodness, having to hear that. Stop.
Yeah.
Summer, I have my report for youth and rec.
Oh, yes, quickly, while you're setting that up, Glenda, do you mind giving the youth and rec report? We just skipped that and I.
That's what was texted to me, because I left it on. Anyway, the floor has been down at the gym, the Easter egg.
Looks amazing.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
The Easter egg hunt went grade three hundred and fifty-plus, wonderful. Basketball camp moved to Dennett, I guess that's, this must be for summer.
Yes.
Um, because of construction. Still working on the after-school art, so you know, it's full to capacity, they're just trying to figure out where that's going. And then there'll be some dances after vacation, no dates yet. So that's it.
Thank you. Why didn't you text me and tell me?
Just so that we, Mrs. King had shared about the drop-off situation. There was a situation on the last PTO, April fourth, where students were dropped off. And typically, our staff is down there from eight fifteen to eight thirty. And some parents get there at eight thirty, or a little after eight thirty, but our staff comes in at eight thirty. So this is why, I mean, Mrs. King and myself and Mr. DeSantis have had several conversations that, at eight thirty, there's not as, like, at that time, our staff is required to come in the building. And there was confusion in terms of the timing of it all. It was at like the perfect time of, our staff is coming in, and still there were a few, a few parents that were still dropping off, instead of going around to the front of the building. Which is difficult because it is over on the side of the building, that, I mean, from the distance between our side here and to our main office is a very long hall. So that's why what we have changed at now, in terms of at eight thirty, our staff puts up a chain across the railing, and it's a, maybe it reports to the main office or something.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Just because that's what happened, is that our staff came in, and there were still people looking, everyone's clock was different. So this is why we kind of had this conversation.
Yeah, but now that I know that there was, and I know it wasn't just myself, that Mr. DeSantis and Mr. Gregory now, and adult, sit up there waving, and they haven't been able to identify that. And my issue was, this is the same, we already handled the situation well. One of my biggest concerns was other parents left, two girls, they're alone, had no care for them. Going to kid that they were traumatized, embarrassed, confused, and had no idea what to do. You know, that was, where was the common sense for parents who are shocked, school safety and other things, yet those in the community and other parents within our community? See, I don't really care about myself, what about the Easter? Have it helping, I don't need to be congratulated or anything for that, I wouldn't have it for anybody, but. We still don't know who the person was up there, makes me very, we just can't, we can't see that as well.
The cameras in there, they're not showing any, any adult that was up there. It was, that's why I think that was, the issue was, there were students that were dropped off, and no adults were outside, so.
Three other parents I know spoke to me, saw what I saw, and I don't think anyone would purposely drop this child off and leave if they didn't see the adult, and that would make them know where it is. So it's, it's so hard.
So that's why we put the chain across.
Right, so hopefully it's resolved now.
If you don't see a parent, if you don't see one of our staff members down there, and the chain is up, go around to the front of the building and make sure you.
I know Aaron out in the cockpit is a new repair job on pickup, because I didn't recognize the staff member. They didn't have a badge that was noticeable or anything, so you're okay. And you think, I don't know, you know, so, you know, but that's just me, but I didn't know, but now I know, I know, I call new staff. So it's, it's not, so that would change the address, no serious, or doesn't it be fuzzy or?
Well, we're always welcome with feedback, so. Any feedback you can share with us?
The cameras, I mean, they're danced on the software, the cameras are still fairly new, so we have to change some of the angles on it. But believe me, we've been looking at the cameras extensively, um, to see, you know, their question that you have. I think the most important thing is, even at eight fifteen, we've had a few students, we've had to call the police a few times because there are parents that are dropping off their kids before eight fifteen and taking off to work.
That's insane.
Leaving their kids, yeah, so we've had to call the police, you know, to consider loitering before eight fifteen, so. And even at eight thirty, if you're trying to make it well, now we have that, you know, that, once that gate is up, it will close for business, eight thirty, so you need to come off the front. So like I said, continue to try to get to work, or maybe fifteen, eight thirty, it's closed. And it took you to come in with that conversation probably to get that next, that gate, so we appreciate it.
So and the gate's not open until eight fifteen, so it's up?
The staff has to unhook it.
Okay.
And then release.
So it's on both ends, it's at the, it's before eight fifteen and after eight thirty, you get the gate?
And I'm sure the same is true for the end of the day, for pickup, or whatever. Okay. Okay, I mean, who would have thought, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so our safety presentation will try and be on point here, and share as much information as we can. Feel free to ask questions as we go through. We started here, this, in two thousand and sixteen, we revised our original emergency response plan, which was typically code yellow, code blue, code red, and now we're, it's much different now. So this, we've had meetings for the last couple of years, but in August two thousand and sixteen was when we really did tend to make a change to the overall response plan. One in particular, at least, was the lockdown drills that we did do, instead of it being code blue, code yellow, code red, now it's, we're looking at a shelter in place, which we just had last week, so hopefully your children came home. Oh, Mommy, Dad, we did a shelter in place, and it was over in Dodgeville, and I think in ten minutes or so, but the police department and the fire department were here, we went around throughout the building, made sure we checked all the classrooms, and saw which areas were in lockdown shelter in place. Then we also, Brian Tiltree, Charlie, whatever, you know, go on, actually. The enhanced lockdown drill, we have not had an opportunity yet to do public work in the police department's order. Definitely make sure we look into that as something, maybe in June, that we want to talk with them about doing something that would be enhanced lockdown, which is sharing the information with our staff, and they need to make a decision about which way they need to go, to evacuate. The active shooter intruder, Alice protocols, that is something that Brian and I have been trained on, we've been working on that with our staff. The piece yet that we have not rolled out with is how do we communicate that with students? But we do have a draft and a plan in place, that we do share it, just why the challenge is, is how do you share that information with?
Yes, yeah, it's a big difference between the case.
It's very different. So we think we do have a tentative plan in place right now, in terms of how we want to share that out with students and staff. But it'll be a combination of Brian and I, the police department, and several of our staff members to go into each of the classrooms and talk about what exactly it is. And we have, there's a children's book that we're working on that we can use. So I'll get a copy, I didn't bring it, I'm sorry, but I can share that.
It's actually on the website, it's called I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared. And it's on the Alice website, I have the link on all the schools' websites.
We have a video in here, too.
That hasn't been there.
And we can share this out with you as well, so if you want to take a look at it.
And what you mean by sharing with the kindergarten, sharing with the students, is the actual protocol itself? Or how to go about it when it actually happens?
Well, to talk about why you're doing it.
Why, why you're.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the, the goal is, and we're sort of doing this in all the elementary schools, and that's our next level, is we're going to have the police come in and present with the teachers or the administrators, depending, like, we'll probably have all the kindergartners together, all the first grades together. Mike Schley is, Schleff, excuse me, is, is sort of our go-to person, he's not an official school resource officer, but he's the one who's here that knows everybody the best.
And, and all the kids know who he is, so they're comfortable with him.
Exactly.
So I think his presence is important for this conversation.
At the end, hopefully we will have time to get to it, there's a, like a three-minute video that shows a police officer that goes into a, like, first, second grade classroom and talks about, you know, what do you do, you know, a barricade and a bad guy, and sort of what's a fire drill, what are the safety things you know, and he goes through, he does a really nice job. And that's our goal, is our next level, is to go in and to do this with all of our elementaries, and then actually do a barricade drill, which we have not done yet on our elementary level. We have on secondary, but not on elementary yet.
Okay.
I think when you're dealing with the elementary level, you're spanning seven grades in this district, and it's very difficult to find age-appropriateness.
Right.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, they're asking their teachers, they're watching, they're talking to them.
Yeah.
To get down to the kindergarten, first grade, even second grade level, how do you present that?
I mean, even third, my son has no idea.
Right, and you'll see in the video, it's, it's well done. And, and I think Mike will be great at it, he's, he's a great guy, kids all know him, as you said. And the ideas for the evacuations, I apologize, I'm sort of picking up the pace, so we're not too fast. I'm from Jersey, I talk a lot faster than Kane. So, um, the idea is to get a safety drill to be like a fire drill, it's muscle memory.
Yeah.
Like, they don't think, they just know what to do. Like, our kids know if a fire drill goes off, they just, they go, they know how to handle it.
Right.
And that's our goal with the, um, the evacuation drills and the, you know, any of the safety drills, is that it's like muscle memory.
Right, or like a bus evacuation, or whatever, yeah.
Exactly. I'm sorry, did you want?
I had a question. Do the teachers have authority to decide on their own if they hear, I'll just call it a commotion at the far end of the building, you know where my class is, um, to evacuate and go when this, while there's still time? They, they can do that?
That's coming up, yeah.
All right, good, thanks.
Do you have a question, Ms. King?
I don't, but the drill last week went really well, I actually talked to Mr. DeSantis and Aaron's teacher about it. It came home and we spoke for close to three and a half hours about the drill. And I had just attended the FBI's training on, I think probably the active shooter training and presentation.
Yep.
Really should have been active mass casualty of that, because it didn't just go over education, playgrounds, mom, moving into your home, not just guns, anything that could, and how, how you could train pre-K through a trick correctly to what the module they were using. And some of it was from the Alice program, the different things. But my first grader, Aaron said, well, different scenarios. Well, what if they enter through the public library, come, come down to the kindergarten? They wake up the kindergarten, just kill the office staff, they, they let us know there is an emergency through the intercom system. So what do you, so now I have a first grader, what do I do if there's no one in the office? And there's no intercom system for them? So, oh, Aaron, what are the meeting? I guess I'll bring it up, we'll have to ask these questions. Well, well, what are different ways I can help? Well, Aaron, what ways do you do us going and out? There are different throughout the school, be aware of, if they don't abuse this. So you're very capable of teaching young students. And I think a lot of times, the school systems, and I think, don't get me wrong, I love the school system, put a lot of the political correctness first, when there is, should be absolutely no politics, definitely no political correctness. And if you communicate with parents, why, and I'm telling you, if you show them the two sides from Alice in the classroom, what they are, they're different, and the casualties in those classrooms, they're going to support the planning coming in place. And understand the teacher's discretion to circumstance, because you've given them a visual aid. You know, and I understand the difficulties, and why I'm most impressed with too, when I went to the FBI presentation, was the difference in you're tackling the disabled and your special needs classrooms, whether it's the council on agents, your special needs classrooms, have we addressed that? Is this, well, the council agent, they have enough special needs classrooms in the plans and how do you do it? Or is that something that we also need to?
We.
And here, we have all.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I apologize, we might not be able to get into all the questions because we're supposed to be at the finance committee meeting in a matter of minutes, actually at this point. But your points are well taken, and you may, it seems like it's something you're very committed to, and you've established, obviously, a great relationship with Kane and Brian. We have had meetings over the last years, and we meet monthly with our police, so we do have plans in place. This is pretty much a global overview for it, so if, if it, if it's okay, maybe we could go through the whole presentation, and then if you still have some other questions. I know I, I, I have two budgets I'm presenting at the finance committee meeting, so I'm feeling like I need to go in a couple of minutes.
Negotiating what's going right now.
Yeah, so, right, and going into some specifics, but we feel pretty confident for what we've done so far. But if it's okay, maybe, is it all right if Kane just keeps going with his presentation?
And I've thought of a lot with these two, and I'm comfortable asking the school committee of the district, would you host the FBI presentation and training that was just not in Washington? They do it for everybody, they, you have to work out games, but wouldn't it be something that you'd be willing to do? That way.
The community is more educated?
It's open to, it's open to the public somewhere, well, Mr. Johnson was there as well.
It, it was for civilians.
Right, right, yep. I, I mean, I'm, I certainly think that's something we could look into, for sure. I don't, I'm not opposed to it at all, I'm always for further educating everyone, so.
I think it would be beneficial, and as you're working behind the scenes, your parents now understand, they understand it. So in certain terms, you could hold it up and say, that they just, they feel more comfortable with what you're doing. And I think it'd be really, really beneficial in the longer.
Good, noted.
I got you back to seven thirty.
I'm just going to take a overview of the last two years, what we've done. We've done our fire drills, we've done our evacuation drill, we relocated over to the church across the street, where we have a fire base. We've done some traditional lockdown drills. Kane, myself, and other district administrators were Alice-trained.
We have a new design, we're taught not to sort, should be.
We have conducted staff training on the new emergency response plan. We've also had two present development staff trainings with Alice going over different scenarios. Also, Mr. Dirk and I worked on getting our exterior doors labeled for emergency response using the national protocol. Think they use a label number system, north side A, east side B, south side C, west side D. So if you notice those numbers, so police and fire show up, and you know what door to go with. If there's an intruder at B three, then you know exactly where it is, so. We've also got exterior signs, work with the Dallas, so we're constantly getting exterior signs as well for city group. This year, we had a refreshing course on our emergency response plan the first day of school. We followed up with two more PD staff, Alice trainings. We've been working with our Halifax Police Department, Officer Schleifer's Alice train a few months ago. We've also had security cameras installed, approximately about thirty of the units, thirty-one, thirty-five. We have that software running, obviously, there's some things we got to work out, but. And then we're hoping Mayor June to work with Halifax Police and Fire on your then evacuation Alice drill. There's an intruder in the store, what do we do? Some of you are wondering, what is Alice? Alice is moving beyond the traditional lockdown to increase our schools' chances of surviving an armed intruder. Alice is the acronym for alert. All of our personnel, you can announce, no code to use, that's probably the biggest difference. Where before you can put on code red, now if you see an intruder, anybody in the building, you scream, you yell, you're on the intercom, whatever, you need to alert, so. Lockdown possibility. Mr. Johnson, you were saying, what if I'm up on the corner over here, and the intruder comes to the front lobby? You're probably not going to lock down, you're going to get out of the building, so that's your decision. Inform, using technology, whether it's the intercom, whether you're choosing walking talkies, whether it's using our all-call system on our new phones, Steve Pello, we have the capability now to do an all-call from our own classrooms, which is good. It's just informing staff members around the building where the intruder would be, if you need to lock down, if you need to barricade your room, if you're close to the intruder, or if you're far away from the action, get out of the building, so.
It's not, it's not a series of steps, it is, it's based upon the information that you have, then you respond to it.
Common sense.
If you're barricading the room, and you feel that you. If you're barricading the room and you feel that the intruder is trying to get in the room, you are preparing to intercept the shooter, the intruder. It will cut down the accuracy rate. You grab a stapler, you grab anything in the class, if that intruder is trying to come into your room, you are trying to cut down his accuracy rate. Where the old system, lockdown, you'd be in the corner and you just wait for him to shoot you. So now we're trying to cut down on the counter. And obviously evacuate, get away. Like I said, we have a shooter in the front lobby, everyone over here probably should get out of the building. And like I said, it's not order, it's just on what you hear, what you're informed about, on making that proper decision. And I think it's training our teachers to be proactive, so they're prepared to make that reaction or a decision when that time comes, so. That's the acronym.
Did you have a question, Linda?
Yeah, just, oh, two questions. Are the kids always told to drill when you're going to do the drill?
Yes, yes. A lot of times.
Just remember that in school, the fire alarm going, panic, when you didn't know. Is this real, is this not real? So I think that's good, because that's...
And even when we're doing our staff trainings, we take it serious, because when Kane and I were at the Alice training, they shoot at you, they're shooting at you, they're, so, they bring the anxiety level up. And that is the goal of training, is to bring the anxiety level up, to make those proper decisions during those anxious times, so. During our staff trainings, definitely on the intercom, there's police and fire here, so.
No, they're not.
Definitely training, we take it very seriously.
Are our doors for the classrooms, do they open into the classrooms or up to the hallway? Are they all different?
They're different. Most of them open in, some of them.
Do we have door stoppers?
We do.
It's a jam?
Yes.
I know it's just such an easy thing, but that slows you down.
I know if you remember, Matt Durkey got a grant, and we talked about that last year.
Oh, okay.
The ones that go in and then spread out, yeah, those are good.
So not just the rubber triangle thing?
Yeah, we'd rather not go too much into all the details.
We have to, all those are pretty long.
But we chat later.
Can you lock, like, these doors?
Yes.
The inside?
Yep.
Oh, great, thank you.
What if we lock these doors, I mean, lock that door, that's this room, room, is that, can I escape that scenario?
There's doors in the back.
And then there's two of these offices.
Does that go, that go up too? And the children that would be in here during a drill, would all know?
Yes.
Would all those went out? That's right, because those windows right there, I'm looking, so. Haven't replaced them in a really long time, and won't cause anything to stop? If you're going to look at it?
No. So I think Alice, when you look at it, it's three possible situations based on what you know. It's locking down the classroom, it's barricading, which is more of an enhanced lockdown, getting ready to counter the shooter slash intruder, or evacuate to relevant places. So those three options. So like I said, we've done the traditional lockdown, we're above to move beyond into the enhanced lockdown or possible evacuation, so.
And we've done two evacuation drills here. We've gone to the church across the street, so students are pretty comfortable with handling that. Getting out of the building as quickly as possible, and then finding next one's over at the church.
So our goals, once again, through the staff scenario, we're not just on PD day, we're going to try to incorporate something into staff meetings, to start our staff meeting on a scenario. Could be five minutes. Continue working with Halifax Police Department and Halifax Fire Department. Trying to get that age-appropriate education in, on training drills. And once again, teaching the younger kids, especially the kindergarten, first, second, even up to third, fourth grade, teaching and presenting to the students, so. Try to stay as clear as all that. What were you talking about earlier?
Talking to children about a violent intruder can be very challenging, scary, and hard. I have a book that might be helpful. I'm not scared because I'm prepared. The purpose of this book is to enhance the concepts taught by the Alice Training Institute and make them look lookable to children of all ages in a non-scarfful way. By using this book, kids can develop a better understanding of what needs to be done if they ever do encounter a dangerous someone. Unfortunately, in the world we now live in, we all have to ask ourselves these central questions. What option do I have for survival if I ever find myself in a violent intruder event? The teacher at the annual school wants her kids to be prepared for everything. One day she teaches her students what to do if a dangerous someone is in their school. Classmate teacher said to us, we need to learn a new drill. It's called the sheep, the shepherd, and the wolf, so get ready, here's the deal. I'll be your shepherd and you're all my sheep, so you must do what I say. Pretend there's a wolf in our building and we need to stay out of his way. We need a great plan of action in case we start to get scared. The Alice plan will work the best to help us be prepared. The A stands for alert, there's a wolf in the building. The L says we need to lock down. The I says inform, because we must tell the others when we see the wolf around. The C stands for counter, if the wolf sees us, we must undo things to ruin his day. The E stands for evacuate, which means leave the building and run away. My teacher gave us a great gift today, she taught us how not to be scared. There's wolves in our world, but we know what to do, and now we are prepared. Kids learn lockdown, noise, movement, and distraction. For more information on I'm not scared because I'm prepared, please click on the button below.
So there's one other video, which we could show just really quickly. And it shows a police officer that goes into an elementary classroom and how he presents to the students. And this is sort of what we're working towards with our police. I meet with them monthly, we have a community of concern meeting, so we've had these conversations. They all know this is what we're moving towards. We just did the drills on the secondary level, so, go ahead, thank you. Is this the one that was lowered to four minutes? Okay, great.
Can you make it bigger? Usually it's there.
It's on YouTube.
It is, we narrowed it to like four minutes, or four minutes, because it's like fifteen minutes.
You can just get it off the Alice website.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was taking a camera.
So you guys, why, you guys go outside, right? Why you go outside? What are you trying to stay safe from? Right, if the building's on fire, you don't want to be here, do you? You want to leave, right? You don't want to be in, it's dangerous in the school. One at a time, I'll call you guys if you're ready. It's dangerous in the school, so that's why you're going to school during a fire drill. What other kind of drills you guys do? Tornado drill, right? Something like this. What do you guys do for tornado drill? Yes, sir? Doc, that's correct, where do you guys go? Your hands. Okay, right. What are we trying to stay safe from? A tornado, right. If there's a bad storm outside, a lot of wind and a tornado, we don't want to be by the windows, so we're going to go in the hallway and cover our heads, so we're safe. So that's what we're trying to stay safe from, for tornadoes. Now you guys practice, one more drill, anybody know what that's called? Lockdown drill, you're right, a lockdown drill. What do you guys do for a lockdown?
Uh, we, we gotta think about, so, why, and why, and put our backboard up?
Okay, so you guys, why, you go by your locker? What's your teacher do?
I guess Paula couldn't make it to some of the...
Okay, does she lock the door?
She said she'd be okay to some of it.
So for you guys lockdown, you lock the door, turn the lights off, and you stay by your lockers, right?
Yeah. So sit by the lock.
Sit by your locker, okay. Sit by the door, okay? Well, let's talk about this guy, what are you trying to stay safe from? Yeah, what are you trying to stay? Yeah, that's really it, guys, trying to stay safe from a bad guy, where someone is not supposed to be in the school. So we don't want him to find us, we don't want him to get to us, so we lock the door and we sit over here in the corner. Most of your lockdown probably looks like this. These kids are quiet, they're sitting against their cabinets, the lights are off, the door's locked. Are they being really loud? They're replying, right? And that's probably what you guys are supposed to do, right? Well, this is what we're going to talk about today. I'm a policeman, so I'll talk to you guys about stranger danger, bad guys, and different things we can do. So during a lockdown, I'm going to give you guys some different things to do, that's just to stay in your room. So we're going to talk about three things. The first thing we're going to talk about, she says, get away from the bad guy. I think we can get away from the bad guy. But we'll talk about that. Okay, just one second, we'll talk about that. So the first thing we're going to talk about is maybe not staying in our classroom. You might not stay because of the lockers. If our teacher can safely get us out of this building, I think it's a good idea. Kind of like a fire drill. During a fire drill, the danger could be inside the building, right?
Good point.
So if there's a bad guy in the building, it might be dangerous to stay in here. So maybe we should think about leaving. So the first thing we're going to talk about is maybe leaving the building. The second thing we're going to talk about is making it harder for the bad guy to get to us. If we're going to stay in our room, if we're going to stay in this building, if the bad guy is in the building, let's make it harder for him to come through that door. Can you guys think about some ways you can do that? Lock the door, you're right, we're going to talk about that here in a minute. All right, and the third and last thing we're going to talk about is stranger danger. Has anybody ever heard stranger danger before? What is it? Okay. What if you guys have been told to do, if there's a stranger comes up to you at your house or your park and they're trying to talk to you, trying to try to grab you, what are you supposed to do? You're going to be hiding from them, what else are you supposed to do? Yeah, so we're going to scream, we're going to run away, right? That's what you guys are supposed to do, if there's a bad guy trying to get you, we're going to scream, but we're going to get away from them, or run. What if you grab him, what should you do? You have to kick out. There you go, kick out. All right, you're just backing, you're by your head. So you guys, I'm going to tell you, anything, listen up, listen up. Anything you guys can do to get away, if there's really a bad guy trying to, anything you guys have to do to get away. So we're going to run, we're going to scream, but we're going to take or bite, but we're going to get away. We're going to talk about how that works in the school. If there's a bad guy in the school, we're going to do some of that, the same thing. Well, let's talk about the most important thing. Now, this is a muffin, and he's not paying attention. He's saying, what did you say, all I heard was blah, blah, blah. So this kid's not paying attention. I'm going to tell you guys, the most important thing is listen to your teacher. That's the most important thing you guys can do in school is stay safe. I want to repeat that, it's very, very important. The most important thing you guys can do in school is to stay safe and listen to your teacher. Now, surprise, I guess, it's not, there's a test at the end, I have a test for you guys. There's three questions. Now, the kindergarten's a pass test, you guys, you guys are passing. All right, see you.
What kids don't know?
Listen to your teacher. Why do you guys think it's so important, listen to your teacher? Yeah?
Because, 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 because you might, because you might not learn.
Well, you might not learn, to stay safe in school, you guys already told me you don't want to go for a fire drill, right? You guys know where to go? You guys told me you guys know where to go for tornadoes, all right? I'm going to tell you guys, if there's a bad guy in the school, he might not know what to do. It might not be as easy as sitting by the lockers anymore. Our teacher might say, class, we're going to get out of here, really, really, really. Or she might say, class, help me with some desk in front of the door to barricade. Or she might say, class, let's run, let's get out of here. Run, scream, it's a stranger danger. So we don't know yet. We've got to listen to our teacher, like this law, this big year. You guys, you guys do, you guys ready to listen? It's time to listen. She's going to tell us what to do, when to do it, how to do it. It's very, very important to listen to your teacher. It's the most important thing I want to tell you guys today, okay? We all got who we're listening to, let's point to it. Right, we're going to listen to our teacher. All right. So the first thing she might tell us to do is get out of the school. She might say, class, it's not safe here, we got a lockdown notice. It's not safe to stay in the school, so let's get out of here. Let's let those kids run from the school. We're going to watch a video. This is going to give a classroom, and they're going to give a lockdown notification from their principal. Let's listen to what the principal says, and let's watch the class stuff, okay? We've talked about that.
Attention, lockdown, lockdown, there's a man walking down the gym. Lockdown, lockdown.
All right, guys, and it's on the first floor, I go, this is that building, we're on the second floor, we're going to evacuate, so come on, let's go, line up, let's go.
Great.
That was good.
Yeah, the principal came on the mound and said lockdown, lockdown. Did that class have lockdown? Did they turn off the lights, did they have our lockers? No, none of the lockers, tired, all right? Yeah, that class, they evacuated, they got out of there. That's what we're talking about. Our teacher might ask us to do that, and turn a lockdown. Did they, does the teacher have to say it two or three times what to do? Does she have to yell at some kids that are talking? So the kids, make things quiet, they listen to the teacher, and then they got out of the building. So let's say, our teacher asks us to leave the building, where should we go? Outside, you're right. Should we light up outside like a firework in the building? I don't think so, I think we should try to get promoted in school. Our teacher might take us a couple blocks away, she might take us to a business nearby, or a park nearby, or a house nearby. Let's think about our school here, what do we have around us, where do you think we should go? Yeah? There's a church nearby, yeah, and that's actually one of those, that's number one. If there's a church nearby. Yeah, maybe just in the neighborhood, right? Isn't the next neighborhood right behind you guys? Go down to the, it's only the bad guy here. Yeah, you want to get far from the school, you want to get away from the...
We got the gist of it, yeah.
He's really good.
He is really good, though.
He is good, huh? I think that the first or second grade.
It was early, whatever it was.
It was. He had a lot, he had a lot of periods.
Do I have another question? Do we have any students with wheelchairs?
No.
Are all the doors wheelchair accessible? For future, like here? Picture outside, but...
Okay, outside, there's a...
Like these, do these doors have ramps?
There's none, that's just a pad.
I would think in any case of an emergency, you would even pick the kid up and leave the chair. Like, you gotta go, you know?
Well, some sixth graders.
That's true.
Well, you guys have ramps, right? My school doesn't have ramps, so they wouldn't get in an elevator during a fire drill. So they have, the teacher would pick the student out of the wheelchair and carry them down. Even they can do that from the drills too, sometimes. Because we only have an elevator without ramps, so. So the second floor, not going to jump in an elevator during a fire.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah. I'm just thinking, like, you know, deaf, blind, any of those situations that could be. But then, whatever, do we have any deaf or blind kids currently? I mean, they would always be with somebody, though, I guess, right? Like, they're on the bathroom by the... They would have somebody with them.
Jump in and help out, if we had students that have cats, like, or something like that.
Yeah.
Families that would jump in and help out.
I'm just trying to think of the other people that can run to the...
I think the whole concept of Alice, Mrs. King was talking about, when we did our training, we looked at Columbine, and we looked at Virginia Tech, the classrooms who did the traditional lockdown, casualty rate and the death rate was way up. When you look at some of the cases, especially Virginia Tech, I think one or two classrooms did try to evacuate. Obviously, the casualty rate was much less. The average response time is about five minutes. And like I said, we're not going to be perfect with Alice, but it's what you do in that, I don't know, one minute before the police come. You could save ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five lives, so that's the goal. It's what do you do before the police get on site? So, and even here in Halifax, I know we have to leave at four sometimes during the day, but they are one minute away right down there, so. Could be five minutes, could be three minutes, I don't know, so. It's not perfect, but I think the traditional way of just sitting there, like a sitting duck, we're thinking there, and now we're starting, what's happening, so. We're getting there.
Was the thing that you saw, like, talk about Alice?
It touched on it, touched on it as this is a resource, but didn't go into the specifics. I'm familiar with Alice from another school's...
I'm familiar with Alice from another school's district I came from, and from homeschooling. There were certain facilities where we homeschool, that if you didn't go in this training as a parent or a color, you weren't allowed that. Trainer, adult, they took advantage of security very seriously. And then my daughter's in a private school in Hanson, and her school uses Alice as well. Her principal was actually after her, and she laughed so disgusted, it felt like her school was really good. They are pre-three to eighth grade. And they don't have to worry about six hundred students, the whole school is there. So that was eye-opening too, to say, oh, this is what we know, and this is what we do in that law. It's thirteen, two, and we do different activities and other things, and we're different other than law. And as you already know, Bishop Soapy used to sell out a couple, not like it was a different scam, but it was a check here, wake up. This is what we do. This is what's been recommended to us, you can stay in our local agencies. But here's the FBI conference, no. We'd really like to turn X, Y, and Z and ceremonies around. We don't want you to do those things, and this is law, and we're the ones on scene, and we're the one with the case study, and we're the one with the game. So it was extremely eye-opening in those areas, and after the Penn Phillip, yes, school safety are in there on my mind. And Aaron's very, my son very open, who's spoken about. He's a great, great kid. His teacher too does different things. She uses every day schooling to teach her kids what needs to be done, whether it's playground safety or the incident that happened, love it, you get locked out of the school, but she handles it right then and there. You know, I can't say enough about my son's teacher. She's phenomenal, you know? It goes above and beyond. How do we critique those things? And I know that I spoke on the administration, not anyone care about school budget. But I think it's hard to stop looking into the fact that as a small town, we have small cap police file. We're looking to possibly absorb the different shared services with Clinton. How is that gonna affect us? Or affect dining to the school and other things in case something else could occur? And I'm not more concerned about the internet and active shooter. Or, like the FBI was saying, that has, they're straight about. The parent that didn't get custody and then asked you divorce. This one decided to go off there, rock up, explain. See, you can be more right about the president, the pew, next to each church. They do what about an active shooter coming in, and they can do just as much mass doubt, doubtfully, as the events and giddy is. The question makes it a whole lot more realistic when you look at it in those views, rather than what you're just seeing on the news. The way that the presenter was explaining.
So I've asked Bob to look into the program in Marshfield. He told me about it. I couldn't make it, so I think that's an excellent suggestion. So I think that's something that we can reach out to the other school committees in our district with, and maybe host something at Silver Lake if it works out in that way. Just, you know, education's always key. If there are other issues more specific to different measures that we take regarding security, we have to discuss them in executive session because they're not public knowledge. So if anybody on this committee has any, like, very detailed, specific questions regarding our security procedure, I'm certainly more than happy to have an executive session meeting or whatever about it. But, you know, for obvious reasons, we can't go telling the world everything that we're gonna do, you know, 'cause then our hand is short.
That's completely true, but I think we also need to find a way for you to be able to communicate to especially your K through three parents, because they need that staff set at home. It's all well and good if you go to jail in school, and it's all well and good if child comes home and talks to mom and dad. But if mom and dad can't engage in helpful muscle memory at home, or make children aware of what they're wronged about, it's not going to be the most beneficial. It could be if we found a way to include parents.
Right. Yeah, I completely agree with you, yeah.
But it's how, how you properly do it.
Right.
Most of you here know me, know me very well. I'm not completely a threat, everybody knows this. I'm a firm believer in child safety, you do it, 'cause if we can explain to them why the school chose them this and what you should have, have these options, to say if something did happen, you're gonna have to air contact it something. We'll say, we'll go back, go back to HOPA, and we'll say something happened in HOPA, and Adrienne passed away in the classroom, rather than to scale it. And I'm upset because X, Y, and Z didn't happen because there was no communication and demanded we put another different, because of the fact that I was just completely uneducated on any of the process from the school. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Parents that may have had knowledge or the parent that may have had law enforcement, law education, that's gonna be completely different, I understand you. But I think if you do the thing.